Hello, how are you?
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with individual justice for all.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
I'm going to make the, bring up the still on this, the agenda, the employee handbook and the town, usage of town vehicles still not on this, been requested every month since April.
You have a work session for the town if February?
And that's what I'm told every month, so why don't we have it?
Because you said you won't have a work session with me.
Okay, well, we're gonna argue, so basically we'll set up a work session, so what's good for everybody?
This is a pre-agenda, they can work this out later.
Okay, so I need approval on the agenda.
I'm sorry, can you guys speak up a little bit?
Can't hear ya.
Yeah, you're not.
I just made a motion to approve the agenda.
Set up.
Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Approval of regular meeting minutes for September 8th, 2022.
I move that we approve the minute for September 8th, 2022 meeting.
One second.
Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Yeah, Robert.
What's going on, Mr. Robert? I would just like to let everybody know that might not know, I've been here a long time, even though Donald is our elected official as mayor, he has a learning disability and can't read or write.
Well, yeah, put it up.
He's paperless, whatever, and on July.
What do I need to hear? Keep talking your own, alright?
If you read it from the front to the, from the top to the bottom, I will apologize for my misunderstanding and this will be the end of it. Since you, you know, you can't read or write, there's, however, there's forty-three situations that grant money won't be given to us until all those are gone through improvement. How are you going to do that?
To the board?
Well, if you can't even read what the paperwork says, how are you going to understand what it says to sign any of the paperwork?
Really? There again, where'd you get your education?
I haven't known that for a long time.
Oh, have you?
Yes.
Well, I'm gonna sit here and argue, okay, so what's your point?
Well, I was just in the respect.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I just support for a minute?
What?
He's attacking a mayor and whatever else with no, basically attorney or nothing with him, so I think this is immaterial, and we just move on to our reports.
Now, I would think that, you know, what, the man's got a right to speak and there is, I've heard the same rumors.
Well, good for you.
And there's video of you not being able to read paragraph.
Multiple.
Multiple videos of you not being able to read.
Yeah, what's your point?
My point is a $5.8 million loan and you're the signature on this, a loan and slash grant, and I'd like to personally know that you are capable of understanding what you're signing.
Sure.
And if you all, the only thing I would say is I would respectfully ask you to design it, Mayor.
Really? Can you do it?
No, I am, I have, I'm, right now I'm disabled. I do dialysis treatments three times a week and I have bladder cancer, so I do not have the energy or the time to do that, or I would probably put my name in, in February.
You could have more happened, grab an application, buddy.
So I know my limitations, I know that I can't do that.
Okay, yeah.
So you?
Have a good day, buddy, have a good day.
That's rude.
We're done.
Yeah, rude.
No more rude than you are most of the time.
Okay, we can argue, folks. Robert, thank you for coming up.
Thank you, Robert.
I might mention that this is the third time that I wrote my name up there to talk, and this is the.
First time I've seen it?
The third time that I've put my name up there, and nobody ever told me up here to go to the newsroom until this.
First time I've ever seen it, Robert.
I do.
That's right there, so that's right there. Awesome, thanks. Okay, reports, building inspector. All right, this is going utility report right now. So how's everything going with the water caps and the water leaks?
Well, one only to repair, as far as I know.
Why, I saw you working on one. You have top four?
Yeah, I had another one on Saturday, in Sunday.
Major or destination, what were those on?
That one was on the, I don't know about Charlie, I was at 100.
Excuse me, could you speak up, I can't do it here, you know?
Um, yeah, I, I got called out at 5:30 in the morning, in the afternoon on Saturday, I worked on it till 8:30, 9:00, I got too tired on it, I couldn't do anything by myself, so I started to get on at seven o'clock in the morning on Sunday, and I recovered that call in.
Was it one of our main lines, or?
No, it was a service line from the house, but since it was from the main to the, the town's responsible.
Anything else on the, on our water, water situation up on top, how's the?
I'm hoping to get in the reservoir just right above the pipe, which is not good, I'm running all three of my wells, all three of the four, 24/7, and just keeping it up.
What about the concrete? The concrete? Didn't you, didn't you say something about the concrete on, on our water storage up there?
Oh, yeah, the roof, I would like you to get bids on it, get it replaced.
Can you tell everybody what's going on with that?
Well, years ago, before I ever got there, the roof had been patched in several places, and although the coating on the patches is in good shape, for nothing is getting in to the top, I, last month I pepped up on one of those patches and took the coating off, and the concrete under there is crumbling, pretty much all the way through the.
Oh, how big is it, Virgil?
The spot I dug up is probably about three foot around, but there's patches up there and they're even bigger than that, and I can just guess the form of the concrete under there. The concrete's almost like two and a half inches thick on that roof, and I'm just afraid over time it's just going to start caving in.
What, what, what are they using up there, what kind of patchment turn up?
White, I don't know what it is, kind of rubbery substance, I don't know what it's called.
So you're saying the concrete's falling inside?
Not yet, but it's going to, get a heavy snow on there, is a good possibility.
You got, you got the whole, the whole top or no?
No.
Or just?
Just where it's patched.
So you think we have, how many patches up there?
I don't know, there's probably ten patches up there.
Is it your recommendation to get a bid on the place?
And don't go back with the platinum.
A pitch to let the water rain out?
Pits and that kind of thing.
So, how high, how high would it have to be?
Much higher than what it is right now, just a slight angle to keep the snow off it, keep the water going down, put more advanced in to, to keep air pressure, right now there's only two vents up there. To certainly the air in there, keep everything dry, and the problem is it's so moist in there, it's just eating away at the ground.
What is the, the board's up on getting bids, I mean, we're gonna hit a dub.
Yeah, I think, you know, we should get bids from somebody that knows, you know, what they're looking at and share with us, you know, what they think should be done with it.
Because how, how big is that, that roof?
What is the dimension, you don't have a check?
No, I'm telling you, it's seventy feet by forty feet, I'm not a guess. I have a sanitary survey tomorrow.
Okay.
I have a, and she'll be looking at it tomorrow. In 2019, she recommended the entire reservoir be replaced, so she'll be looking at that tomorrow, and be more information on it later.
Yeah, if you just do that, then, then we can get it out.
But she's gonna recommend it be replaced.
Well, if it's gonna cave in.
I don't even want to get up there anymore.
I can't blame you for that.
No, I mean, you can walk on certain spots that are clear, but there's some spots you don't want to walk.
And, and they are giving us pretty, sort of, like an A train, you go over a spot, you think, you think that's enough, stable?
Yes, yes, just the roof.
I understood what you're saying, right, you're, you're talking about a secondary structure or roof over it to say what's there is each request to be replaced.
No, no, no.
Secondary structure.
Well, I guess I used to.
They're now, take it off.
He's talking about secondary.
They're moist or underneath.
Well, that's, that's why I thought, you know, if they would work, because if not.
And I was just trying to clarify, because I was seeing pictures of them. It's raining up here, you can slide the concrete off the first.
Okay, well, give, give us our report tomorrow.
She won't have a rate, by the way.
Well, no, probably.
Well, hopefully by the next meeting.
Yeah, she'll, she'll have a ready for that meeting.
So we can get that, we can get that thing up on the news, because.
I've already contacted one company, I just had a setback from, because I know that.
Well, the, yeah, that's, that's our, our leaky water and everything in there too, so, okay.
How are you holding up, people?
Tired.
It's a lot of workload that I'm reading here. Has there been any applications or anything submitted yet?
Just one so far.
One so far? Can we consider giving the man a bonus or a raise or something for his extra dedication?
Well, you get, he gets overtime for a call, all right?
Again, but there's, yeah, I'm just saying, can we consider a special consideration for the extra workload?
That's, that's up to you, the board member.
So we did a work session, we discussed it here.
We can do it right now, we can discuss it, and, that's the work.
Let's just kind of run through your, see, let's see what Virgil's gonna have to do over here, let's, let's put this up.
I didn't hear you, Mark.
Let's just kind of take it for right now, we can always go back and make it retroactive.
I bet he'd like to know if we appreciate what he's doing. He is saying anything that you know we appreciate you. You know, and beyond that.
Virgil.
You'll be getting here.
Heading a key now for Virgil.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, George. See, office report, we should have it. Okay, no office, no office report? So we'll move on to old business. Margarita on sewer and water cap, 300 South Transiscos Street. Is she there?
No, she's, she's on the agenda, so like, I can't.
Pretty much, well, it's up to the board if, if you, if you want to round this sewer and water cap on the other end of the moratorium.
Nothing's changed over there, no.
What's that word? On Transiscos, right there where you go behind the housing and you got that counter trailer right there?
Right, I was saying, nothing's changed, no pads been built.
Yeah, they're just, they're just waiting for us to approve them, we have their drawing and everything here on it. So if you get a talk to Adam, and Adam did say, yeah, it was, it was fine, so.
So do we install that before they put the pad in, or do we wait on that?
How do you guys usually do it, Virgil?
I never dealt with that before, where they put the trailer in and padded like that.
Because I know that's supposed to plug in a.
They putting in a bowl or something like that?
I think it was a modular, I remember, like, twenty-four by sixteen. And might be, I don't know.
So if you do the last one, it would be down there behind the housing.
What would we do for a fact, if they were bringing in a, a house?
That's what I'm saying, oh, they bring in a house, what are they doing?
They're supposed to be bringing in, and I'm looking for the drawing, I got the one for Mayville. I'm looking for the drawing on first, I have this one by sixty.
I will take our town clerk's advice, and we'll cable this for right now, they come up to that point.
Second on that?
Sorry, I didn't understand what you're saying.
I'm just, uh, table it for right now until they come up with some, few plans for us.
Mayor Proto?
Yes.
Mr. Piano?
Yes.
Mr. Thorn?
Yes.
Okay, so election day for January tenth, twenty twenty-three.
I believe that was already, um, done with by the board, but it just needs to be recorded into the minutes.
So according to phone call, it's all yes.
That's just a whole special election, right? And that was just the only question on it?
You should have been in the pocket.
It wasn't in the pack. It was here on the table, I guess.
Yeah, lots of party stuff.
Yeah.
And if anybody would like to know the dates that are due during the election time, it can be up on the website for what days you can pick up your packets, when they need to be turned in, and when they need to be notified. So that information will be out there. And if you don't have a computer, we'll leave some out in the post office. You guys wanna pick them up there as well.
Well, Warren, line was up?
Yes. Yes. I wouldn't like to say that. I'm only hearing like every other word people are saying.
Okay, here's for ADA ramp for town hall entrance. Uh, Ken, Ken Apple is the one that put in his bid.
Did we run an ad for this job?
Was that?
Did we run an ad in the paper for this contract?
Yes.
We've been doing it for over three months, uh, or, and let, let me just explain some things. Um, tried to get bids. I had somebody from Arizona call me. They wanted seventy-five thousand dollars. And then somebody from California called me. We did it on the national, uh, bid thing. Somebody from California called me. They wanted over ninety thousand. They wanted like five nights worth of rooms, uh, at their convenience, when the rooms were gonna be available. But, cause they had jobs they set up in Springs, and they'd send a crew down periodically and, uh, it was all kinds of stuff. There was all kinds of things they come up with. And I said, guys, we're not just kind of a community. I said, we're a little town here. Oh, okay, so they just hung up on me. So that was basically that. Uh, we've been running this thing. We tried to get Tony Perdiso to do a metal one. And Tony's just so damn busy and I find he, uh, Ken Apple finally come about, and that's the bid he gave us.
And I know this guy's work. I've heard that he does excellent work. I have no complaint with him whatsoever. Uh, is there a blueprint or something actually showing what we're gonna get? Because this doesn't really explain a lot. It's labor material for one ADA ramp of forty foot long.
Burn, we, I didn't bring that in because we pretty much took things off with the city of Trinidad and city of Walsover cat. And they did metal stuff, but the city of Walsover, or the city of Trinidad, excuse me, had the ones on the back of, uh, the old jail that they did, and that's kind of what we looked at, but, you know, I gotta, uh, get at all the stuff from ADA that they put out, and that's basically what he based his bid on. So that's all I can say.
So there is no blueprint or design?
No, we didn't, I mean, we're trying to build a damn handicap ramp. We're not trying to make these projects for damn high that, no, we can't afford it. You know, we can't, we, uh, start getting structural engineers and all that stuff.
No, I said, you're taking this wrong. I'm asking because if I want to have a house built, I would at least have a drawing like this saying what the floor plan is.
Well, we can get that, but, uh, I'm sure Ken can give you that. I'm not sure. I didn't even ask him.
And it says ADA ramp, which means ADA compliant.
Yeah.
And so that means we're actually gonna change the entrance to the town hall?
Well, not necessarily. We're gonna come off the side where the water deal is.
Right.
And come all the way up and then go across, and still the entrance will go in, the stairs will disappear. They're gonna go in there and there's stairs now for people to walk in on stairs. We'll be on the west side towards the shop.
Okay, but we'll all actually be using the same door to enter there?
That's the one door that fits the furniture.
And the other thing that's a part of this, there's no railings on this, is, uh, when I talked to Tony down there at Toe Park, he says, I'm, I can't give you a bid on railing because I don't know, you know, if you're two inches or three inches off. Tony said, I just can't go in bit, uh, like a spick of pumpkin, I hit that. He said, so, uh, that'll be another bid we'll have, and then, uh, we're gonna have to put in an automatic door in the town hall.
Okay, so this is a partial bid?
Yeah, just to get a ramp up there and get them in the door.
I do have some information, the required, uh, dimensions that I can email to you if you'd like.
I would like to look at it, yes. I, I really feel like before anything is done, Mark, that we should see a blueprint.
Okay, that's right. I understand.
Yeah, I understand.
I think Ken, I think he would have anything.
I respect this guy's work right now. He's got a good reputation.
I don't think Ken has a problem with that either, like, uh, getting asking, you know, when he dropped the bid off, uh.
Okay, well, this is a little bit beginning now?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, group is, uh, new code problem. The other, I can call again, folks. Purchasing options. So basically, it's, it's for our codes that we have, uh, like in our code book and stuff like that. That's what this is, that's what this is for purchasing of it. And you should have that in your pocket, correct? What the price was?
These are the emails from Sarah?
No, this, this would be the, like, the code book?
That's from Sarah, but that's about the code book, that's about the code book.
Okay.
Basically, I guess I'm doing this one around this country, but, uh, anytime we go in and redo the code books, what we call re-qualification, they come back in, they look at our codes and, uh, they give us kind of a price as what we need to do on bringing them up to date, I guess, is this, you have to think, Victor.
Most like, it's like the state books and the, that you get. Every year they're, they're updated. So basically, that's what we need on this, is update our, our new code.
And they keep us in standards with the bits of state and local. Did they give us an actual price, what they thought they might need to do, or other, other help, but I can bring it with me.
And are these, are these good for how many years?
Re-qualification should be done every, every year. For more than twelve ordinances, you should probably update it by soon.
What'd you say?
Oh, you asked if, uh, the, they have to be updated every year. The code books and I said, yes, but if you have over amount of ordinances to put in there, it should be done that year, so you're not having to do a new print check one time.
So they're talking eighty-nine fifty for the process. And the rest of it's updates as they come about, thirteen hundred standard. When was the last time that, uh, we did it? It was more, it was more than this?
Uh, two thousand twelve.
Yeah, it was a town hall more than this, when they get it. It was on the board then, but, uh. We have, we have a large amount of, with that, larger tanks. I'll be firing on that.
Now it's up to the board.
This isn't a new contract, is it? Did we use these people already?
It's the blue book that we go by the municipal codes, and that's the book we're updating.
I understand we're updating that book, but this company is entering the information. This is a existing vendor.
Everybody uses, is the municipality.
So if they, if there's some changes to be made, they suggest what needs to be?
No, we said in the ordinances that have been approved, that are in the book that we've updated, we will make new.
And then we have a fee for every time we update something. There's a standard fee and then there's, uh, services plus for monthly updates or discounts if we pay it all at once, it looks like. Honestly, I don't know pricing on anything like this, so. I, I wouldn't know if that's a good price or not, so that'd be, does anyone else?
Last thing, I had it then, it's two thousand twelve, and then before that, they had it then in two thousand and five.
They've been carrying this along.
So then again, it's up to the town council. What we wanna do is that we're gonna need to get it updated.
Yeah, I don't think we need to go up their full contract. I think we need to go and blow it through, so can we cover it? That kind of stuff.
Can we add this to the workshop so we can sit there and discuss this and?
So we'll go to the workshop.
With the warm up workshop?
Can we combine some of these things all to one workshop instead of splitting this up like?
Right.
Okay, yeah, if we could add this to it, I think we'd have a better understanding.
We need a date for the workshop.
And I'm available whenever. I probably can't be open.
About next Thursday.
Six, as usual.
That work for everybody?
Yes.
We should win a workshop next Thursday at six o'clock.
Second.
That's second, Virgil?
Yes.
Mayor Proto?
Yes.
Mr. Piano?
Yes.
Mr. Thorn?
Yes.
Mr. Meow?
Yes. Okay, one is worked out for Richard Sanchez. And that's to be determined, and I think he had a drawing of that. That's all on Maple, correct?
Yeah, I believe it's a lot up there. It'd be north of Bill.
West. Used to be the old gas station up there.
Uh-huh.
Further down.
Further down, so.
On Maple, right?
Yeah.
I have got some.
Across the street.
And that's.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. West, west of the gas place.
West of Bill, excuse me, and, uh, a little bit more. Yeah, north of the gas.
And you're gonna put modular home there. Have you talked to the building instructor about this? Not yet.
No, it's another one. I think, you know, there's still some, another person up there that, let her stand, maybe doing something, so I don't. He come and talk to me about it. I said, well, do you give us some concrete, give us some, their information and give it to the town? I can't tell you anything either. I said, besides, I'm not gonna be able to go talk to them.
Yeah, the, the, this is showing five blocks, one soul, so. He's got four blocks?
No.
And these are both marked block one, and the house is splitting on.
I mean, I don't have a lot going to. He's doing it, but, uh, he's, the information just a little lacking.
How many blocks, Rob?
Five. That's what this is showing, five blocks. Did I see this? So four more to table this one, so next one, two.
So we'll be waiting for more information from Mr. Sanchez?
Mm-hmm. All right, man, I'll talk to the board. Wanna tell you what's in that, or do we wanna?
I didn't hear the last thing.
What do you want? Table it for next meeting? Should we get further plans on that?
It's gonna be the only thing we can do. Yes. Yeah, I don't think, I can make a decision tonight.
Get tabled. Okay. Processing for adoption of ordinances.
Now, this, this I thought we're gonna go into, uh, put this in the workshop also.
What's that?
This is the whole thing about deordinances, how they originate, get their resolution, how do they come to the public, how do they come to us for discussion and how they get passed, right?
Yeah, I think you're, you're right, Mark. I think that's more of a workshop thing than a meeting thing.
Yeah, we got four workshops.
With that, uh, all the others are.
Okay. Now, that we have is approval of the bill.
There's a question I still approve.
Second?
Mayor Proto?
Yes.
Mr. Piano?
Yes.
Mr. Thorn?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just before we do it here. Virgil, the question stuff, I know you're confused about and stuff, but we have a lot of, people have to go. CML can come down here and do a workshop. We got a lot of people who come down here and help us out, who we need to do it. They can do it individually, or they can deal with the board, so we have a lot of questions. You know, call one of the girls in the office and see if they, you know, they can set a workshop off to come down here. You're right, I'm glad of the stuff. I know you don't understand it, or it's kind of cloudy.
Well, and I'm not the only one that didn't understand it, but we did set up the workshop just now for next Thursday at six, right?
You're right, I know. But I'm, but I'm talking about anything else. With anything else you have, like budgets and stuff, because we're gonna be coming up with those, all that stuff. I often wanna get into one of these workshops and, uh, CML gets out, they do them Trinidad, Walsover, wherever they do them, might have to go there, but, uh.
Well, and that rolls over into the, we're done with this, right? We're to?
Yeah, we're done with our meeting.
I, I'd like to ask a question about. I, I'd like to ask a question about the interim loan ordinance that we passed last week. It doesn't appear like, I was under the impression we left here that there was changes going to be made on it. But it doesn't appear like the changes were made. We voted, and it looks like it passed the way that it was given to us originally. So, what do we do with that?
And I forgot to the one council?
Yeah, we just...
So, but we voted to pass the ordinance, and we all sat here in front of everyone and on camera saying Gerald would be assigned. The board would give monthly updates on everything to do with the water project, uh, and there's something else that was to that. But it appears like when we voted yes, I was under the impression we were voting yes with those changes. Yet we accepted it and published it in the original form without the changes put on it.
Was that motion in the meeting?
Excuse me?
Was that motion in the meeting to do that way?
Well, again?
And I understand, I understand, we, we just got tricked.
I know.
No, I'm asking, cause I wasn't here.
But we're getting out of...
And I apologize, last night, you were not here.
We're getting out of our agenda, cause we already passed that stuff, like, I mean...
But we're not, we're at the closing end of the meeting, whenever I get to bring up things, right?
No, we're, we're past our agenda, what we already done, we should've...
Well, but we were tricked into passing.
No, we weren't tricked into anything, all we needed to do is get that done, so we can get this project...
To bum rush it through, and the changes that we sat here and discussed with the attorney that were agreed to were not made. And I'm not gonna argue it all night, I'm just wanting to make that point that it didn't happen properly, in my opinion.
We approved what we needed to approve to get this project keep moving.
Exactly, and that's what makes this a dictatorship. You did not pass what the discussion was on the changes. We sat here and...
I made the motion on the ordinance, period, that's what we, that's what we did.
Mark.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Mr. Thorne, before, before it was passed, he, he made some changes, and the attorney agreed to all of them.
Was there a motion on the floor to manage the change?
See, that's where the trip comes in, that's where the tyranny comes in, that's where the dictatorship is. How can you look at it any other way? It doesn't matter what's put on the table in front of us, we vote in good faith, but this is what I made the motion to do whatever we have to do.
Mark, there was a, a motion, and the attorney agreed to make the changes, and he spoke with Mr., uh, Mr. Thorne, and told him the changes would be made.
That's exactly what happened, but the changes didn't get there. I know we're stuck into it, but I'm trying to bring up that this is the kind of service that people get from the council. It doesn't matter what you said here and discussed, it doesn't matter what you voted on. Whoever put together, the bond coun- council got the information, the ordinance came to us, there was changes that we made. But everyone so hurried, much of a hurry to bum rush this thing through, none of the changes were made. That's not fair to the council, that's not fair to the people.
Hold up, hold up, cause I haven't seen the final, I haven't seen the final already.
It's been published.
I haven't seen it.
Okay, workshop?
Workshop.
It's published, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was here the night of the meeting, and when the motion was made, it was made to approve the ordinance. When you guys took it and went back and was asked, the motion was made seconded, the motion was not changed to, I motioned to approve the ordinance with the changes that Mr. Thorne has asked for.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, we got tripped into it, though, and that's all it was, because everyone... This board hardly ever follows a proper procedures for anything. My understanding, when I took that vote, and I'm not gonna contest this, because we'll throw this interim loan into a mess. I'm bringing up the fact that that's why people think this is a dictatorship. Doesn't matter what we vote, doesn't matter what we say, doesn't matter what we think. It's gonna be done the way a small group up here thinks at once.
But you have to put it in the motion, and, then you could have made that motion yourself, you should've, you could have made, said, I want a motion.
I honestly thought there's video of this, I thought that was what it's going to...
But it wasn't made in the motion, that's what I'm trying to, it wasn't made in the motion.
Make a video conversation?
Making a movie, uh, Jerry, I mean, you need to bring it up in the workshop.
Second?
Why you been bothering?
Second? First? And this is six forty-five.
Tell Sue hello for me, please, Mark.